Second town council meeting. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to be in my blood, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mike Arilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swatz.
Here.
Chris Salatas.
Present.
Dave Westland.
Present.
Beth Hernandez. Present.
So we have a quorum, alright. Item number four is the minutes. We've got the minutes of the June 23 regular meeting. They've been waiting for an edit, but we don't have an edit done yet, so I would like to, I hate to for in minutes for a long time because if they're not available and approved, they're not available for public record, so I would like to approve these minutes as they are presented.
Yeah, we have them already.
They haven't been changed. They are the same minutes that you saw two months ago.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 23?
So approved. Or so.
Thank you, Brian. Is there some support?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, they are approved for, I didn't hear you, Mike.
Nay.
Okay, three to two.
Mr. Westland, does this require a voice vote since he's?
Oh, roll call?
Roll call.
That's a good point. You should do a roll call.
Okay, roll call though, please.
Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
No.
Michael Schilling.
Nay.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. Those are approved, three to two. Number five is a proclamation. First proclamation is from the Daughters of the American Revolution, Timothy Ball Chapter. And I will read the proclamation. On September 17, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, led by James Madison, George Washington, and Benjamin Franklin. Franklin, these brilliant men created the new form of government that became the standard for self-government to the world. It is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Town Council of St. John, Indiana, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week, and urges all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which the privilege involves. I have set my hand on this on the 22nd day of September in the year of our Lord 2021. Gerald Swatz. Is that adequate?
It is, but you need a motion to.
Oh, I do need a motion.
Yeah, you need a motion to approve the.
Okay.
It's not proclaimed until you guys say it's.
So do I get the motion before I read it?
No.
Okay.
No.
Alright, so do I have a motion to approve the proclamation for Constitution Week?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You gotta do a.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. Okay, that is approved, five to zero. Second proclamation is of Indiana Rail Safety Week. Yeah, I'm gonna read this one too. Indiana is ranked fifth nationally for railcar crossing collisions, with 93 crashes, eight fatalities, and 44 injuries in crossing collisions, as well as eight rail-related trespasser deaths and 10 trespasser injuries in the year 2020. Whereas reducing the number of crossing collisions, informing the public about looking and listening for approaching trains, reminding the public that railroad tracks are private property, and obeying traffic laws reduce the number of deaths and injuries among Hoosiers. Whereas the Indiana Operations Lifesaver, along with all 50 states, the Federal Railroad Administration, Federal Transit Administration, Federal Highway Administration, the Indiana Department of Transportation, Indiana State Police, railroad companies, local law enforcement, first responders, communities, and volunteer partners, together to educate our citizens about railcrossing safety, as well as to enforce applicable state laws. Whereas the Indiana Operations Lifesaver is committed to reducing the number of railroad crossing crashes, deaths, and injuries, as well as trespasser casualties for the state of Indiana, thus helping Hoosiers have a better place to live, work, and raise a family. Whereas the Tri-Town Safety Village is educating and informing schoolchildren about rail safety, reminding the children that railroad right-of-ways are private property, enhancing their awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring that they are taught to look and listen while near railways, and to obey established traffic laws, which will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. So I'm looking for a motion to approve this and proclaiming Indiana Rail Week Safety from September 20 through September 26.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. There's support?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved, five to zero. Item number six, public comment. There are no signups. Is there anybody who came to speak this evening on public comment? Okay, we will move on.
We did receive one via email.
Okay.
We will have it memorialized and entered into the minutes in its entirety. However, I will submit it is from Bill Purcell, 8649 Fairway Drive, St. John. He wanted to tell the town council members that because of uptick in crime in the area due to Illinois, he had a meeting with Councilman Pondinas and Police Chief Flores to determine some measures that could help alleviate said crime, and a mobile LPR would be a good method of doing so. They would cost about $35,000. They spoke at length, and he did some investigating with Motorola, which would not require any additional charges, other than I believe the equipment itself, and he urges the town council to approve that expenditure before the end of the year.
Okay. Anything else?
So that, when Bill and I talked, he had talked to me today, and I know you didn't read the whole letter in its entirety, which is fine, but he's at, Motorola has a deal where if you get that one system with the cameras, you get another one free, but you have to apply for it by December 4. So you might have to pay for brackets, but when we talked to Chief Flores, Chief Flores said, he showed us some stuff with the cameras, and he said that would be a good thing for his department to have, but you're gonna spend approximately $35,000 and you get another one free. We thought that was a, would be a good idea. When I say "we," it was Bill and I in our conversation today. I didn't bring it by Chief Flores, but it's kinda like a no-brainer. You're getting something for free, and we have to pay the $35,000, but you still have something that you're, another squad car can go down the street with and run these plates, because it's also set up with the cameras that are set up in other towns. So I think it would be beneficial, but Bill wanted to reach out to you guys, and that's why he sent this letter in, so you guys would be aware of it.
That's appreciated for sure. We already have some license plate readers installed in town already, don't we?
We have stationary. This was a request for mobile. They would be on the police squad cars.
And the only shortcut I would see in that system is if the squad car isn't around any particular area at a specific time, the mobile wouldn't pick it up. Whereas the stationary cameras on the posts, and I believe Cedar Lake's got them coming into their town and leaving their town, as does Sherrville.
It's my understanding that the variety of communities throughout Northwest Indiana, especially those on the border of Illinois, have them.
Correct.
So our neighbors to the north, I know of at least three communities that follow 41 have them. Multiple entrances and exits of their communities in order to monitor.
And Cedar Lake does as well.
I believe so.
I've already checked on it.
Will entertain idea of a mobile, and certainly not in place of a stationary one, so.
I know, I don't, I did not say anything about removing the stationary ones. This was supplemental.
Mobile is good because it's all around town, and with all the crime that's coming from Illinois to Indiana, he thought, well, that's, you know, would be a good idea.
Well, no, I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I'm saying that for a mobile unit, unless it's in the neighborhood, it's not gonna pick up any specific occurrence, that's all.
But as long as it's moving, and then that, then that car is also hooked up to the cameras that are on the streets, so if your car is wanted or stolen plate, it comes by and it rings in the squad cars, it rings.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with that. I'm just saying that Cedar Lake and Sherrville have got them stationary, that means every car that leaves or comes into town is covered.
So is this a mobile where you can move it to different neighborhoods, or is it mobile?
It's mobile in the car. It's just like you're driving in your car. It's on a squad car.
So if the squad car isn't there, it's not gonna pick it up.
Then I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to move this over and have Chief Flores take a look at it.
Right, yeah, I'd like to do that.
And if he's got an idea for a program, I'd like to, you know, entertain that too, so.
Yeah, how, how we can get more coverage with it, spending that kinda money.
Willing to entertain any cost-effective way to keep this, our community safe.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven is a public hearing. We've got a public hearing on ordinance 1743, which is a petition for annexation of certain real property to the town of St. John. The petitioners are James and Vicky Folgra, property owners, and Altoff Homes LLC, with their power of attorney. Mr. Westland.
The proofs of publication are in order.
Okay. And then as far as opening remarks, I can go into some detail, but can you wanna go in a little more detail than I would cover, Chris?
Absolutely. I worked with Chip from Altoff Homes. Helped him kind of navigate our annexation process at the time. It currently is 41.46 acres. It meets the continuity to the community. It would come in as an R1-zoned parcel. He's already made a presentation in the study session to the plan commission about what they would like to do there at that particular property. And I believe you should have, yeah, the ordinance behind you. We will be coming up with the fiscal study and resolution for your next meeting if it's
Right.
Taken favorably.
Okay. I will open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that came to speak on this public hearing this evening? Calling twice, calling three times. I will close the floor to public comment. So the fiscal plan, Chris?
So right now, the town has a standard fiscal plan that it's been using for quite some time for annexation, for annexed properties. The fiscal plan will be the same as the ones used in prior annexations. As you see and hear in your agenda later down the line, I have some comments and questions about this, but it will be coming out for your next meeting. The town's standard fiscal study as it is relatively says that there's minimal to no impact by these annexations.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? And do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1743 on first reading only?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. There's support for that?
Second.
Roll call.
Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. So that is approved, five to zero. So the adoption of the fiscal plan and the adoption of the annexation will be at our October 27 meeting. Is there anything else we needed to cover in this? Mr. Westland?
No.
No, okay. Then we will move on to item B. Which is ordinance 1744A, B, and C, which is the 2022 municipal budget, and the petitions to appeal for an increase above the maximum levy for civil town, sanitary, and water districts as part of the said budget. Mr. Westland?
The proofs of publication are in order.
Okay.
So some highlights from this budget. We went through a two and a, two hour and 15 minute work session, so it should still be fresh in all the council members and clerk treasurers' minds, as well as with the department heads, so everybody had a hand in creating this. And special thank you to the clerk treasurer's office, who had the arduous task of inputting this to gateway that is no easy feat at all. The 2022 budget, some of the highlights that we accomplish, that we aim to accomplish with this budget for next year is there'll be three additional employees, one in the building department, one in the public works, and one new police officer. This has in it a million-dollar match for our CCMG, the Community Crossroads Grant, which is road paving. Some of the items from the five-year plan that will be covered in the 2022 budget are a copier and office equipment for the clerk treasurer's office. In the police department, they'll have tasers, a copy machine, computers, new officer equipment for the new officer we'll be hiring, three, or evidence kits, radios, public safety server, three new vehicles, two of those are replacements, one of those is for the new officer we'll be hiring, and officer comp time buyout. For the fire department, we'll be having turnout gear, radio batteries, a chief vehicle, online training platform. In the building and planning department, we'll have laptops with monitors, file cabinets, office construction, he needs a door to his office in desperate need, near map program to help with zoning, a code enforcer vehicle, a zoning ordinance update, which is also needed throughout the community, and a comprehensive plan update. Through the public works department, we will have a street sweeper, which is going to be on lease, leased to own. We will have a F-550 plow with spreader, salt barn with acreage, sidewalk replacement and grinding, and storm sewer work. In the parks department, we have tentatively planned to finish a bike path around the gates' soccer field, pickleball courts, F-250 with plow, playground equipment and restoration, and playground at the gates, as well as volleyball court repairs. Townwide, we will have a Google for government in there, as well as town hall basement repairs. There are a few corrections that will be needed to be made next year within, mostly within the fire department's budget due to some input errors. There's a possibility that a few of these items that I had mentioned will be covered by grants next year if we're successful in obtaining those grants. The overall estimated budget is roughly $24 million, between the unappropriated and appropriated, and with this excess growth levy, which we hopefully plan on applying for if it's received by the council today, we will see a tax rate drop going from .5871 to .5582, which is a .028 decline in our taxes. We're simply growing much faster than many of the surrounding communities, so our taxes are going down. Those are some of the highlights that I have.
Okay. Beth, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just, I would, wouldn't necessarily say any changes that may occur to the fire department were due to input errors. I would like to clarify that on the record.
Okay.
Other than that, I think everything that was stated is accurate.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
I will at this time open the floor to public comment. Anyone on the floor to make public comment on our budget for next year? Calling twice, three times, I will close the floor to public comment. Questions, comments from the board?
I think we collectively, as a group or a team, have put together a pretty aggressive budget for next year, but at the same time, monitoring spending of money so that we're holding the tax rates. That's what we've tried to do, and will continue to try to do. I think passing the road impact fee is going to have a quite, have quite an impact within the next year or two, because at the rate we're building new homes, if we hit 500 this year, that's gonna be a whole, a lot of extra money for road improvements, and I think that's key to our budget. Without costing anything to our taxpayers, we're going to be able to fund, hopefully, some good road changes, of which 93rd, and putting a third lane down the middle of 93rd, and helping improve the intersections. I know Mike Schilling is working with the engineers on Route 41 and 93rd as a, as an improvement, and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of that whole study that they've been working on, that Mike has been working with the engineers on. So I think all in all, this is one heck of a budget.
Okay.
And I think the citizens will, will be happier going forward as we proceed in the years to come.
Okay. Mr. Arilio, anything?
I would like to add, I'm very happy, satisfied with how the council came through this process. I'm thankful for our town manager, and also our clerk treasurer, how they were collaborative with this, collaboratively with us. I wanna keep taxes low. This does it. This gets the job done. There's always more to do, but this is a very fiscally responsible budget, and it does not raise taxes.
Wayne?
Yeah, I've, I don't like part of it, because I asked whether the insurance, we're taking $500,000 out of the employee insurance, and I think that was too much money to take. $100,000 is coming from Sergio's fund, and then the volunteer fire department, there's $10,000. I can agree with that, but I can't agree taking insurance, $500,000 from that, and I had asked Chris, what happens if we need to get money and get it appropriated? Where does that come from? And I can't see taking it from the insurance for the people.
Okay.
And, and then another thing that hasn't been in the consideration, I brought it up last time, was grant money. The grant money that we lost because the paperwork didn't get done, that's gonna be, could be $300,000, could be $500,000. I know they're, they're doing their grants now for this year. Where's that money gonna come from?
We don't even know what it is.
I know, but it was a, they were talking about $300,000 possibly. And, and a few years ago, we got on the previous town manager, or the second previous town manager, about losing grant money. Now, did we lose that because of incompetence, or what?
I think so.
So is that gonna be, you know, brought into the, in play with the budget? That's my question.
Yeah, it's possible that it could come into play in the budget. It's also possible that the insurance that you're talking about could play into the budget, but not necessarily, because the half a million dollars that we took out was on our self, our self-insurance.
Right, but then, then.
We don't have claims, we won't be spending that money. So I was comfortable with budgeting it for the same amount that we had the year before.
The year before, but.
At $575,000, rather than a million, million six.
Right, and then the question was asked, well, who's sick? And that was not, not appropriate.
That would be a million dollar question, for sure.
No, you don't know who's sick and what they have, but that, that should've never brought up. But our lawyers' fees, our engineering fees, our consulting fees are high. Maybe we need to lower that a little bit, so when we're getting close, we're already, our legal fees and stuff, some of our fees were already over budget, so I don't wanna get too far ahead. I wanna be frugal.
Right.
Or you can say cheap, you know, but.
No, it's frugal.
I just wanna be, you know, there's other ways, you know, animal control has a car, a truck that they take home. Maybe that can stay on premises, and we can save money that way.
So Wayne, I think you bring up a lot of valid points. I think that all these need to be kept in mind. Always, a budget is not concrete. It looks at the future. There's always guessing games, there's always educated guesses. That's what, you know, that's unfortunately what a budget is, right? We do, we do not have perfect knowledge of the future. These points you bring up are valid. I think they were considered. I also think the insurance that you bring up, I'm thinking if you have a 10-year average and you use those numbers and you apply a percentage increase to it, that's a reasonable way to look at these things. So, but I do, I.
I just don't wanna have to keep going to the well for more money.
I do think being cautious is wise. I agree with that.
I mean, I look at that, with gas prices and everything else that's going up, our policemen take their cars home, and then they can take them shopping and that, maybe we can curtail that. I'm not against the police, I'm for the police, but it's adding extra mileage, extra money. Gas has gone, it's what, 318 a gallon? So I'm just asking for some consideration for that, you know, and, and that's up to you guys, but I, I don't wanna vote for this the way it is.
Okay.
And another thing that got me was we had the meeting on that Wednesday, and I get a phone call, well, it's already been passed. I'm like, well, how do you get that passed? It's 11:30 in the morning, and you guys already passed the budget? It's already been okay? Well, we need three votes. I think that's rude, and I'm not included in that.
What, we have to pass the budget?
Hmm?
Budget was passed at 10:00 in the morning, you said?
Yeah.
I think so.
That's what I was told. I got the phone call, it was passed. I'm like, well, uh, well, we need three votes, we got three votes.
You mean the decisions on where the.
The decision, the decisions on getting this done, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we took $100,000 out of the MS4, and we took a half a million dollars out of the self-insurance fund. So the self-insurance fund should be right about where it was last year. And you know what? If we have a million dollars for the claims, we're gonna be short, and we'll have to come up with the money.
We don't.
But if we budget for a million, and we have to pay a million and a half, we're still gonna come up short there as well, so.
I just wanna.
We have, we're trying to anticipate how much we're gonna spend on health insurance on the self-insured side, and so because we needed to meet a budget, I thought that would probably be reasonable to keep that right about the same number as last year, so.
I will add that at this point, Wayne, you can't increase the budget.
I'm not trying to increase it, I'm just trying to be cautious.
You can only decrease.
Right.
Right, so we would have to pull some of the other things out from some of the other departments in order to meet our budget needs.
Well, and I.
And because this self-insurance thing is kind of a, you might spend it, you might not.
Right.
I, I didn't feel that at the cost of all of the other departments and the things that they need, that we should, you know, double that number if we don't need to, and our average shows that we really didn't need to.
Right, and I thought we could take it out some of the consulting fees or engineering fees.
And we.
Engineering is, we're, we're using a lot of money on engineering.
I know.
We really don't have a budgeted average, though, for the health insurance claims. Last year was the first year that it was actually budgeted for, so I wanna put that on record.
Okay.
It's not like we have, like I know Mike mentioned, a 10-year outlook of what we budgeted for, because it's always been an unappropriated line item.
Right.
2021 was the first year it was budgeted for.
Didn't it, didn't it go dramatically up last year, Beth, versus the year before?
The last six months, the last six months of 2020.
That's, I'm saying.
Well, that's, we had high claims the last six months of 2020. Well, I don't know.
That's what I mean, it jumped out of the ordinary.
Do you know the 10-year average of claims? I know a budget is, budget is one thing, but claims are another. Do you know what they are for the last 10 years?
No.
That would be something to get from the insurance broker.
Okay. Any other, Mike, you have any comments or questions? Mr. Schilling?
No.
Okay. So we will entertain these one at a time. 1744A is the municipal budget. 1744B is the sanitary budget, and 44, I'm sorry, 44B is sanitary, 44C is the water district budget. So we'll take these one at a time. So, do we have a motion to consider ordinance 1744A on first reading only?
So moved.
Support?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak, and thank you, Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
We have Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
No.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Okay. And next, that is approved four to one. Next is a motion to consider ordinance seventeen forty-four B on first reading only. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
No.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved four to one. And then is there a motion to consider seventeen forty-four C on first reading only?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
No.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved four to zero. Okay, so that is the ordinance regarding our budgets for the three different groups. We also have to look at a motion to consider a petition to appeal for the increased maximum levy for three-year growth. Actually, we have to do that in all three of these. So my understanding is we need to get these approved if we can tonight, first and second reading. Is that correct, Beth, so we can get them in by the deadline?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking for unanimous vote on this. Questions or comments on the motions to consider the petitions for appeal? No? Okay. Then we will go to a motion to consider the St. John Sanitary Position to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of, I'm sorry, I gotta take them out of order here. Motion to Consider St. John Civil Town Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars on first reading. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Is there support for that? Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
No.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Okay, and Gerald Swatz?
Yes.
Can we have conversation on what this is?
Please.
Okay. So basically, just so everybody's clear, the petition to appeal for an increase in our maximum levy is basically saying that because our town is growing at such a high rate, we want to maximize on that growth. So we're petitioning to receive an additional one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars back in, in taxes due to our growth rate. So if we don't pass this today and get them turned in, we're gonna let go of...
We'll have left tax dollars.
Correct.
Right, we're gonna lose tax dollars.
Correct.
Probably a good idea to vote for these.
So maybe, it would be my guess that maybe there was a misunderstanding on how this relates to the budget. It's not passing anything to do with the budget per se. It's passing how much we're gonna receive back in tax dollars.
But the money's spent in the budget, right? But this is additional funding.
So, since we've already voted on this, the only way I can see pulling this back is if, if Mr. Pondinas would ask to have the revote and have this recalled and re-voted over.
Well, it's his first reading, too. He'll be a second reading.
No, it's not a second reading if it's not unanimous.
There's no second reading. This is it.
All right, then maybe, okay.
We need a unanimous vote on this, or it's gone.
So I, I would like to, to change my motion to consider the St. John Civil Town Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars on the first reading to a yes from no.
Mr. Westlin?
Okay, so I think what we're looking for, because I think Mr. Pondinas was, was maybe confused as to what this was. The way I heard his motion and the way I think the records should reflect it is a motion to reconsider the petition to appeal for increase above the maximum levy for three-year growth in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars on first reading. And you would, he's essentially asking for a revote on that issue.
Mm-hmm.
You know, technically, until the chair calls the, the vote, or announces the vote, anyone can change their, their vote, but since you had already announced it, he's got to move to reconsider it.
Right.
And, and that's what I heard him do.
Right.
Is that accurate, Mr. Westlin?
Right, yes. I did say consider, but I'll reword that. A motion to reconsider St. John Civil Town Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of one hundred fifty-four-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars on the first reading.
And I would just add to approve it on the first reading.
To approve it on the first reading.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that's a motion by Mr. Pondinas. Is there support for that?
Yes. So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number nine is a motion to consider the St. John Sanitary Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for the Three-Year Growth in the Amount of ten thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars on first reading. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support? Thank you, Mike Aurelio. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Is this to, to go with the budget now?
This is the same thing.
Same, okay. That's why I'm asking.
All of these will be the same thing.
This is petition for the other money for the...
All right, that sounds good. Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes.
It's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Mike Schilling.
Yes.
Sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. So item number ten, Wayne, is the same thing, only it goes for the St. John Water District Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for the Three-Year Growth in the Amount of eight thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars on first reading. Do I have support for that, or motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. So now that we have unanimous approval to consider those, now we're actually looking for the motion to approve, to approve the St. John Civil Town Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for the Three-Year Growth in the Amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Is this first reading or is this second reading?
Second, right. Well, it's, it's on first reading.
It's on first reading, okay, yes, okay. So on first reading. So is there motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support? Anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number twelve does the same thing. It's the St. John Sanitary Position, Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for Three-Year Growth in the Amount of ten thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars on first reading. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Roll call?
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. And the last one would be then the motion to approve the St. John Water District Petition to Appeal for an Increase Above the Maximum Levy for the Three-Year Growth in the Amount of eight thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars on first reading. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Roll call?
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero.
Real quick, if you, if you don't mind, I think next year, this is a simple correction. Since the petitions don't require a public hearing, only the budget requires the public hearing, it would probably help to make it a whole separate item, and then I think there wouldn't be confusion. Because the petition itself doesn't, isn't really part of the public hearing, if that makes, I think that's...
We, yeah, we can separate them, and I, and I want to look in all candor. I don't know that you needed the second vote on the petitions. Ordnances require unanimous consent to consider it on first reading, so because I don't have the statute sitting right in front of me, it, it, certainly what you did tonight is a belt and suspenders sort of maneuver.
Safer than the other way?
But, you know, had Mr. Pondinas not requested the reconsideration, my ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-nine percent legal opinion would have been, you could have done it anyway.
Okay.
But it was set, clearly you've done it this way in the past, and without having the statute in front of me, I wasn't gonna tell you to do it differently, and it appears that once he understood what was being asked, he was in agreement anyway. So we have it now on record, and I think we're, we're solid.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good.
Okay.
Item number eight, new business. Pulling up here what I've got.
It's behind me. Keep going. It's back there. I think it's beyond this even. Well, you got out of order somehow.
Sorry. There you went. Thank you. So eight A is to consider Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh-nine dash twenty-two, which is Resolution for Town, Civil Town Transfer of Appropriations. Beth?
This is just a simple housekeeping resolution where a department can move funds from one line to another line within their budget. Requires a resolution to do so.
Okay. Questions or comments? Then I am looking for a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh-nine dash two-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondinas.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item eight B is to consider ordinance seventeen forty-five, which is an ordinance establishing the procedure for assessment of costs associated with the fiscal plan study for potential annexations.
So this is, for your consideration, as it's drafted right now, well, currently, within the town of St. John, when people come in for annexation, the town has historically done a fiscal study that it has done in-house. I'm not sure the duration of time that it's been using that, but it's been using that specific fiscal study for quite some time. I believe it's somewhere in the vicinity of two pages. For large annexations that are going to have a large impact to the community, I think it would be prudent for the town to engage its financial advisor, or as this ordinance has it, to have the petitioner pay for the financial advisor to run a fiscal, a true fiscal study of what the impact to the town will be. I'm sure I'm wrong in saying that the last time it was done was for the gates, but the last one I could personally find, without doing too much extensive digging, was when the gates of St. John was being petitioned for annexation into the town of St. John. The fiscal study for that particular annexation was in the area of twenty pages. It went through all the tax impacts that it's going to have in the community, and to each of the departments, and what kind of stress it way put onto the community. I would like to start doing, at the pleasure of the town council, if it views that this is something that it also agrees with, to start doing annex, fiscal studies for annexation as this current ordinance is written, for three acres or larger. Now, that number can be amended by the town council if you think that that's either too small or too large, but I feel that annexations that are going to be a certain acreage and bring a, what we would expect, a certain number of houses and development into the community, will make impacts to the town that are not simply minimal or zero. That's, my opinion is that, you know, large annexations create impacts to the town, and I think we need to know what those impacts are going to be, either good or bad, before we get ourselves into accepting anything.
Sure.
So, the number three acre, the question I have is the number three acres. Our normal density is under three, so that would typically be, if you've got nine houses or more, that there's gonna be a significant impact, so we're gonna ask you to do a complete study. Is that, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, and this does also allow the town manager to, at the discretion, waive the fiscal study. We can go back to doing the two-page one that we've had before. If someone's coming in with three acres and they say, hey, this is simply gonna be a hobby farm of mine, I'm only gonna build a house, it makes no sense to make them do it. And we got a quote from our financial advisor, Baker Tilly, it's gonna be about thirty-five-hundred dollars to do a fiscal study for each of these annexations. So it makes no sense to charge someone who's only gonna be putting in their residence thirty-five-hundred dollars to know that there's gonna be very minimal impact. That number could be bumped up to five. I don't imagine we're gonna get too many hobby farms wanting to annex into the community, but there's also some surrounding parcels of land in unincorporated Lake County as we start to move towards them. They are in the vicinity of one to two to three acres, where they only have one single residence on, and I don't want to scare them away from being annexed as well. So that's arbitrarily, I picked the number three for acreage. It can be moved up to five or ten at the council's pleasure, if that's the direction you want to take. I just think this is a good conversation starter, because I think we do need to start maybe putting a better microscope onto some of these fiscal studies.
Well, I like the idea that there is some discretion. I just like to be careful when we talk about discretion, that there's not, that we're not doing it discriminately. That would be my concern.
Or that somebody comes in with a three-acre plot and wants to get it rezoned to our two or our three and put three units per acre instead of the normal two. I just like to be careful when we talk about discretion, that there's not, that we're not doing it discriminately. That would be my concern.
Or that somebody comes in with a three-acre plot and wants to get it rezoned to our two or our three and put three units per acre instead of the normal two.
We don't want that.
Right, exactly. So in other words, we ought to place some kind of exception upon this, that the three is a good number unless...
So are we going to, so let me clarify then, are we doing the study and paying for it and they're, and charging them, or they have to do the study?
They will engage us. We will have our financial advisor do the study, since they will know our town tax rates and all, all the information that we'll need. They'll basically create a sort of a template that will then change depending on what properties they're looking at. So there will be ongoing work as annexations come in because no parcel is going to be exactly the same as the other. But yes, we are going to be do, we are going to be the one having Baker Tilly do it, and we will simply have them charged for the, the cost of the fiscal study.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Any other comments or questions?
I don't like the wording discretion of the town manager, or if it was town council. I don't think that's a good idea. If it's three acres or more, then let them pay for the...
What if they're, what if they're only putting one house on it, though?
But see, then, the discretion, I mean, we've got another item coming up too for discretion. I don't think that's a good idea. That's just my opinion. What happens if you've got somebody that, oh, that's my, my friend, and I paid, I had to pay with three acres, and then somebody else says, well, you didn't do that, he didn't do it, I did. I, I don't think that's...
So no one wants anything like that, I agree with that, but there is a ditch on both sides of the road. I, I understand. You, you don't, you do not want, we do not want, I do not want, free for all.
No, we've had enough lawsuits in town.
We don't need anything like that, but at the same time, you don't want to have a legalistic strict measure that gives you no flexibility and makes it so costly and burdensome that it harms the town and the person applying, the petitioner. So there is something, you know, I'm not sure what word to use, but... Some discretion makes some sense.
Whenever you get into building, there's always discretion. That's what a BZA is.
Right.
If you want, if you want to have an exception, you go to the BZA. If you would, are you comfortable changing who has the discretion? I mean, would you like...
No, I don't have nothing against the town manager or town council, it's just...
I have no problem having the discretion taken out of my hands.
It's the word discretion.
Or whoever is...
It's like doing employee evaluations, you know, you can, you can do that, but then if you've got a favorite, oh, I want to give him a, a raise, I don't. I, I think you're just going to start pushing into some, maybe some legal stuff.
So we also have, we also have oversight over the town manager, which you know, without, without me bringing it up, and if he was engaging in nefarious conduct, we would immediately become extremely upset, right? We would not stand for such a thing.
Exactly.
So there is, this is not, you know, this, there is oversight here.
Mr. Wesley, what are your thoughts?
It's a policy call, right? It's not a legal call. The discretion concerns me to some extent. I, and no offense to Chris, obviously, but I, I think that discretion should be placed in the council. If you're going to do it, don't leave it in one person's hands, have it approved at a council meeting.
Okay.
Works for me.
Because then it's in public, on record, right? There's no...
So, what are your thoughts on that, Wayne?
It makes a little more sense because now you, you've got to have more people voting on it. It's not...
One guy making a decision for his buddy.
One guy making one decision, whatever, I mean, that seems better.
Okay, so, Mr. Wesley, do we want to modify this, or do we want to defer it to next month and come back with a different one?
You could consider it, or just consider it on first reading instead of for second reading in October. I don't know that it's time sensitive. So that's what I would do, and then I would just change, you know, we'll change it.
You'll do the changes?
Yeah, I'll do the changes.
Okay.
And then when you have it for second reading, it'll be...
As amended.
Right.
So we can approve it the way it sits tonight, and then when it comes back for second reading next month, the changes will have been made.
Right, and then the motion will be to approve it as amended.
Okay. You okay with that, Wayne?
Yeah, so we don't have to change the town manager today?
Because you're not going to adopt it.
Right, okay. Yeah, I have no problem with Chris, you know, name there or anything.
No, I, I have the same concerns that you do.
I just don't want to get into problems with lawsuits.
Yeah.
Without a doubt.
Okay. All right, so then we are looking for a motion to consider ordinance 1745 on first reading only.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Arilio. Roll call, please.
Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandino.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swat.
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Okay. Item C, ordinance 1746, which is an ordinance establishing vendor fees and adopting vendor agreement. Chris?
So this partially came out of the fact that the fire department will be having an open house on the ninth, and they would like to have vendors at the, at open house, and we do not currently have a mechanism for them to kind of be invited and likewise charged, assessed a small fee. So this is a vendor agreement for special events the town would have, that this also does not, well, this precludes existing, like the farmer's market, this would not affect that program. This would be for, again, special events and/or open houses, I believe, the way it's written, where the town would like to have, you know, maybe in the future, a Fourth of July event where we could invite food vendors to come and sell food and drinks or crafts of such at those events. It creates a fee structure of $50 for half a day event, similar to our open house that we will be having, and then $100 for a full day, and then $100 per day for multi-day events. So if there's going to be some sort of multi-three-day event that the town wants to have in the future, it would set it for $100 a day, so it'd be about $300. The thought process there is that there is some cost on the town to do advertising, staff time to set up the event. If the vendors are going to be using utilities like electric or water, it kind of encompasses some of those miscellaneous expenses that would be incurred by the town. This also does, as the similar one has, discretion to waive those. This particular ordinance has the town manager or the town council. Again, I am perfectly fine being written out of that. And then it has as an attachment, I believe it is Exhibit A, a license agreement that Dave has drafted up for us that is relatively open-ended, so that way we can use it for different events the town has without having to create a specific vendor agreement for each and every event the town would like to have. So it gives some flexibility for us to use this for multiple things. And it also, I believe it has to be notarized, too.
So a quick question on there, under notes there, I see where it's, you know, where there's discretion there again. So it says the town manager or the town council. Does that mean either or, or both?
Either or.
Either or, okay.
The way it's written.
Do you have a problem with the way it's written, Mr. Wesley?
No, I, I don't have, I mean, you, you can get into the same debate we just got in, right? Like, so, to the extent we want to have that debate, I would give you the same opinion I gave you the last time. So, I will tell you, the license agreement's a good thing. One of the things that I would just add on to what Chris said is that it does also provide a, a liability shield for the town, that if a vendor causes injury to a person or property as a result of their use of the town's property, that they have to hold us harmless, and they're going to assume the responsibility for that. That doesn't mean we don't get sued, but that means that they are the target defendant and that they have to pay for our defense. So it's only as good as the vendor, right, and whether they have insurance and all that stuff, but it, it does provide you with a bit of a liability shield.
And this would only be for events that the town is sponsoring, so like the Oktoberfest that will be happening right across the street from us at the church, does not affect that.
So, I have concerns about the discretion, but I'm the one that asks for the discretion because the fire department is going to have an open house, they want to have vendors there, and it's kind of the fundraiser for the fire department, and it's, maybe it would be difficult for them to have a vendor come to give away free stuff if they have to make a, if they have to pay a fee for an event.
You have a hard time getting them the giveaway free stuff when you charge them?
Yeah, so I would like to have the discretion of...
They won't come in the first class.
From the town manager, or the town council, but at this point, it's going to have to be the town manager because that event is prior to our next council meeting. So in order for this to be in effect, we need to pass this tonight as...
Well, yeah, if you don't pass the ordinance, though, there's no fee, right? So if, if you push this off to next month and the event happens in the interim, this ordinance isn't in effect at all, so there is no fee.
You can defer it.
Yeah, so you could, I, I don't, I think you're all right.
Are we, are we, without an agreement, does that give us additional liability? You've spoken to that slightly earlier.
So there, there's always a risk when you have an event, right? Like, there's always a liability that attaches to it. I mean, you had how many thousand people at your fireworks event, right? Like, there's a liability to having that stuff. And I can point you to other municipalities where people have fallen and, you know, trip, fall and sue, right? Like, I get it, but, so you're, you're always going to have, when you're bringing any large group of people together, you're always going to have a liability. I thought as long as we were doing the vendor agreement and going through this exercise, it was prudent to throw that in there and kind of push it off on the vendor, especially if the vendor is the one that causes the problem.
Correct.
So...
So, so if we didn't pass this, obviously, we're not going to collect a fee, but, while our word, what, if I'm understanding, the question here is just who has the discretion? Well, if there's a zero, you know, let's, if there's going to waive the fee, then the risk is still zero for passing, at least a financial impact is zero either way.
So I would, if, if you're going to ask me to draw a distinction between the last one and this one, it would be a couple of things. Number one, in the last ordinance, you're considering a $3,500 fee, and one person's discretion to waive $3,500 bucks is different than one person's discretion to...
$50.
Yeah, 50 or 100.
Right.
That's number one. Number two, with regard to these types of events and vendors kind of getting into these types of events, that could happen closer to the event where there wouldn't be a council meeting, as opposed to an annexation, which you know there's a, a larger runway, I guess is the way to put it.
Right.
And so there's going to be an opportunity for the council to waive the fee, whereas with this, one could argue that the town manager, because he's only waiving 100 bucks, you know, that there's a difference there. I, I think there is a difference there, but if you're uncomfortable with that, you could put it in the hands of, you know, you could, you could, because of the, there is an event coming up, right, and there is a need for getting this done quickly, where the last one, you don't have an annexation like pending, so it's easy to just have me take that line out and approve it again at your next meeting. This one, you could say, all right, striking the town manager, you know, from that note provision, I move to pass it that way. So you could adopt it tonight. It's not, I like the clean versions better, but in light of the fact you had something coming up here and a couple of, you know...
I really appreciate that. Does anybody have a problem with anything else on here besides, or even if you do have one, this discretion part? Wayne, do you have a problem with anything else on here besides...
No, I, I had that highlighted, I, that one and the other one, I just...
Is that the only thing on here? You have a, is there anything else that disturbs you on there?
No.
That stands out to you? Because from my point of view, you know, how I look at this is that we're formalizing the agreement. I understand that the risk, the risk to having an event or having a vendor is low, but it's certain, you know, I don't have an actuary here or a statistics expert, but I would bet it's higher than 50 bucks or 100 bucks. So I think, in my opinion, you know, at least for me, I would be in favor of passing this and having something in place, have a formal structure that gives us liability protection. And at some point in the future, if we become uncomfortable, if you want to change or revisit the discretion part, I'd be open to that discussion, but I, I would be, you know, that's just my opinion to other councilmen, I, I think that this would be wise to pass.
Mr. Schilling, you have any thoughts?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay.
And we have to take it just like it is, town manager and, or the town council, we can't leave town manager off of it?
No, you, what I was saying was, well, first, your first one is to consider it, right? So that's got to be unanimous.
Right.
And the second one, when you go to adopt it, one could theoretically make a motion to adopt the ordinance with the amendment that the town manager discretionary provision be taken out.
Yeah, I like...
And that the discretion be left with the council. Now, or you could just adopt it the way it is. I mean, it's...
Yeah, for, for $100 or $50, I would like to leave the town manager there just in case something comes up. I don't want to have to call a special town council meeting.
For $50.
For $50.
Total $100.
For $50, and I don't think, because this is events that we are hosting and are supervising, because that's what Thorndon says, I, I don't think we're going to have liability from the public that we waive their fees, so I, I guess, I guess I'm fine with it the way it is.
Yeah, I don't think the council needs...
Does that make sense, Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay, you're, so are, are you okay with it?
Can I put in some input, an experience that is just...
Yes, I will allow that. Would you step up, please? Mr. Borisma.
So all my experiences with the fundraising and events in all the towns, vendor fees are never done by a council or a manager. It's always done by the committee. So if the open house is being done by the fire department, they're the ones who make the vendor fees, because if you make the vendor fees, they're not changeable. So if you're doing an open house for the, they're trying to raise money, I could promise you, you're going to lose a lot of vendors, especially at $100. Because if some vendor comes that's small, they're paying $100, they might not even make $100 that night. So most towns, all vendors are usually a 35, at the max 50, depending on the size of the event. But if you do pass this ordinance, then all the liability is on you guys, and so that's why it's never really done by a council. It's always done by a committee or the fire department, the police department, whoever has the event, they're the ones that usually set the vendor fees. And also, I know that they always ask me for a liability, a rider insurance for that reason.
Right, okay.
So, just my input.
Thank you, Johnny.
What is your opinion of that, Dave?
Oh, that statement.
About the...
Which part? He said a lot.
So not, you know, so this is, this, if I understand it right, that it's really, the town council would not be wise to pass this, and it's done at the department level?
I've done this for the last 12 years, I've never heard of a town council making vendor fees or anything like that, because it's, it's, it's very loose when you talk about vendor fees. If you're having an event and you're expecting 100 people, you know, you're not going to have these high vendor fees, and so usually the committee makes them. So, for example, my foundation, when we do our vending, we agree on what our vendors are going to pay. So we have our events all over, they, like, for example, Bulldog Park, we have our event at, our annual event, they don't tell us what their vendor, what our vendor fees are. We make that decision. So I just have never heard of a town or anybody else making them decisions.
So I think that's a different scenario, though, right? Like, that's, so that's his group going to Bulldog Park and, and the city of Crown Point saying, you want to have your event here, then you need to give us a rider with your insurance, and that, that's a different scenario than what this ordinance is talking about. This ordinance is talking about the town is putting on the event, right? Whether it's the town fire department or the town police department or whatever, but the town...
But you're backed by the council.
The town is in his position, so it is, and then they're inviting these outside vendors in. So that, that's a different...
Not really. So, the town, who's the town?
In your scenario, the town is the city of Crown Point.
Right.
You're the, you're the promoter of the event.
Okay.
This ordinance deals with the town being the promoter of the event.
Right. So what, what event would a town...
The fire department thing that's coming up.
Open house for...
So who, who organizes that all?
The St. John...
Fire department.
The town's fire...
The fire department then would make the funding fee.
And unfortunately, when, when the fire department gets sued, so does the town.
The town gets sued, right.
Whereas if you get sued in Crown Point, you get sued.
What does the fee have to do with being sued? I'm just, I'm talking about the, the fees of the vending.
Yeah, I, I...
That's all I was mentioning.
And we can certainly debate the, the fee on the vendor, that, that's a different topic. I'm just saying, I disagree with the liability part of the statement that you made, you know?
Oh, that was just an example. I'm talking about who...
And the fee part, I'm the lawyer, right? That's where these guys get the big bucks to decide, like, what, what the fee should be, right? Like, and so that, I'm not taking issue with.
No, I, I...
Yeah, and I respect what you're saying, I'm for you, you know, you don't want to overprice a, you know, a fee.
Especially a chair.
I totally agree with that, totally agree.
I guess my whole thing was, it's, it shouldn't be a town's decision on what fees are...
But we have a fee. If you want to rent the park, there's a fee.
I don't know about that.
You want to do anything, there's a fee. I mean, the...
Not the same, but it's completely different.
But when you go to Crown Point, when you go to Crown Point to Bulldog Park, Park in your scenario, and you want to get vendors to show up for you, who's making the decision on whether or not you charge those vendors a fee? You. So in, in this scenario, in this ordinance, we're talking about the town being the promoter that's making that decision. So they're basically both analogous, in your example, to both the city of Crown Point and to you, and that's why there is, I mean, if I was arguing for why you need discretion, it's his argument, right?
I agree with that.
Okay?
I hear it in that argument, for sure, right?
I get that, right? I'm not arguing it either. I'm just telling you that one could argue this...
All right, I'm going to call for the question. Do you have a motion to consider...
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate that.
Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1746 on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Arilio. Roll call?
Mike Arilio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandino.
No.
Mike Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swat.
Yes. That is approved four to one. Okay. So that is considered, we will look for adaption at the next meeting. So what does this do to the fire department's fundraiser?
Right now, you don't have a fee, and it goes off the way it always was.
All right. Item D, consider settlement agreement with the Guzzos. Mr. Wesley?
So you have before you a partial settlement agreement. It's partial in that it establishes the fair market value of the property, which is at a number of 1.28 million. That number happens to be right in the, there were seven appraisals of this property done in the course of this litigation, which transpired over seven and a half years, and the, the fair market value that was agreed to, that essentially puts an end to that phase of the litigation that, like I said, has been going on for seven and a half years, and, and the number that was agreed to is, is right in the middle. If you took all seven of the appraisals, added them together and averaged them, it's right in the middle.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for your work on this.
Yes, Dave, you did an outstanding job.
Yes, Dave, you did an outstanding job.
Are there questions or comments from the board?
No, he did a good job.
All right, so then do I have a motion to accept the settlement agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne, roll call, please?
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandino.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swat.
Yes, that is approved five to zero. Item E, select scoring committee for the NERC client avenue extension project, request for proposals. Chris?
So the grant application that the town made for the extension of Klein Avenue was successful through NERC. With that, there is a process that NERC requires where there's already out a RFP to engineering firms. It closes October fourth. Engineering firms are putting together proposals highlighting their qualifications, the staff that will be working on this project, and their capacity to work on said project, and/or the teams they would also have involved in the project. When we receive those proposals on the fourth, the town needs to have a scoring committee set up of three members. Generally, it's staff to score the committee, or to score the proposals. There's a scorecard out there through NERC that they will use to score the proposals that they receive from the engineering firms. They will then average the three, that gets sent to NERC so they can evaluate, and there's a portion of that scorecard that they also, NERC, or not NERC, NDOT will score. And then the highest of the, the average highest engineering firm or proposal that was put in will then be selected and adopted by the town to run the project for the length of the project. So we just need to.
Could you please, for the general public, highlight the project that's on the table for NERC?
So the current project is the extension of Klein Avenue, that is not currently built. Currently, the detour is on Blaine Street. So that project will extend out Klein. It will have two roundabouts at either end. Partial, if you go on the GIS, you can view on the GIS that there are, and Jason's going to bring it up, there is already right-of-way dedicated for the project, because this has been something that's been planned for quite some time. It's a legacy project. It's been on NERC's radar for quite some time, as well as the town's. It will be a nice thoroughfare. And there is going to be a, if I read the application correctly that was made under the previous town manager, there will be a bridge involved over some wetlands, and there will be a multi-use path as part of the project. It will also span a partial, or a pipeline at the southern end of the project, and you can see where Jason has highlighted the right-of-way. The nice thing about this project, too, is that they're, given that it's mostly undeveloped in the area, and the town and county has done a good job at requesting right-of-way where it has developed, there are very few pieces of land that need to be acquired as part of this project. So now's the time to do it before houses start getting built in that area.
Thanks, Chris.
So the first, and the first probably, the first phase of this project will be a rather lengthy environmental document that needs to be done when you're dealing with any federal grants, and this will, this is, although it was made through NERC, it is using federal dollars.
And being that we're a legacy project, it will give us a better step up over other municipalities who are bringing requests to the table for funding from the Fed. We get upper treatment because it is a legacy project. So we'll get money first before the other new municipalities get any money.
So do you have a recommendation on who this committee should be?
Yes.
And how many?
I'd like to recommend, because it's staff and because they're qualified, we don't have anybody on this council that is qualified to have anything to do with scoring projects. I suggest we appoint Chris Talatas, who has prior experience with the town Lowell, John Gill, who is our current building director, and Sergio Mendoza, who is our current planning director. All three are qualified and are the best equipped to handle, plus they know all the engineering firms that are going to probably be submitting proposals.
You okay with that, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, questions or comments?
Where's the money going to come from, and when do they think that this will be completed?
First and foremost, it's a government project, you have no clue when you're going to have all the money. You ask for a portion every time you go to bat. The next input, that's why we're rushing to try and get it done, the next input, I believe, is due by November. And therefore, you're going to ask for all the money. Right now, the project's estimated to be eight to ten million dollars, of which the government is going to put up a predominance of it. However, you have to document it and go through all these exercises.
And I understand that, but Mike Schilling is working on Ninety-third and Forty-one, that project, it has nothing to do with that, but that also is going to cost about seven million, eight million dollars, just for the roadwork, and another million to run the water prod, the water main from Walgreens down to the railroad tracks. So you have to look at that, and, you know, you want to be frugal about things. And I know NERC takes a long time.
Yes, it's starting, we won't get the money for minimum, probably, three years, we're going to push to try and get it moved up.
Twenty-four, twenty-five project?
It's going to be five years before we see one penny.
And so.
And I have no problem with appointing those three individuals. I just, I like to do, and I remember when we voted on this before, we had three NERC projects, I didn't vote for this, I didn't vote for the other one, I voted for, I said, Ninety-third and Forty-one is our, like, our heart and our body, that's the main artery that we should work on.
Totally agree, but what I'm saying is, this money is five years down the road, so don't even, you know, short of paying for the engineering, which we've already got money from the Fed for five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And the other concern is wetlands. We just went through ninety-six staff in you, and how long did that take?
Did you just listen to what Chris said?
I listened to what he said.
They're going to plan to put a bridge over the wetland that has been evaluated already.
But you still have to go through the wetlands, and if a bridge works, that's fine.
It's going over it.
But it's expensive.
It's included in the ten million dollars.
So, we got, this project is in phases.
Correct, right.
So the first.
Like any project.
The first phase has been approved by NERC for twenty-four, twenty-five money. When it gets to the twenty-five, twenty-six money, we may not get Phase Two approved.
Right.
It might have to be the year after that, or the year after, you just don't know when this money's coming, because it's eighty percent money. We only have to pay twenty percent. But you can't go to the next phase until you get the engineering, I'm sorry, until they get the environmental impact studies done first. And so we need to do this first step of this project in order to get the engineering part, which is five hundred and some thousand dollars from NERC. So.
And that's five years.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to go down Ninety-third, down Blaine, and widen that, and then come around? I mean, it's not that much of a deal. The road's already there, you just got to make it wider.
We're only paying twenty percent, and NERC has already determined that this is a project they would like to see done.
Right, and then there was three, there was four towns involved, it was Shererville, us, our county, that's not a town, and Cedar Lake, and Cedar Lake said no.
Right.
So.
Because it didn't get.
Because it didn't, there was not much there for them.
Right.
However, you need the support of other municipalities that are impacted by the traffic flow. And that's why they joined us, that's why Shererville joined us. And even though Cedar Lake said no, they liked the idea because it could bring more people to their town, getting to the lake to spend more money.
Yeah, I could, you know, everybody does need to agree, you know, of course, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, for sure. Klein Avenue going through, to me, is a no-brainer.
Exactly.
It is a major thoroughfare.
But all we're acting on.
Eighty percent federal money.
But all we're acting on tonight is to appoint a committee to score the RFPs.
Stepping that way is probably a good idea, in my opinion.
Which is just to hire an engineer to study the impact on the environment.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve Chris, John Gill, and Sergio for our select scoring committee for the NERC Klein Avenue Extension Project?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling, roll call, please?
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandino.
No.
Mike Schilling.
Yes.
And Jerry Swat.
Yes, okay, that is approved four to one. Item F, appoint council member to the shared ethics advisory committee and discuss the search for the resident member. Wayne, would you be willing to serve on the shared ethics committee, advisory committee?
No, and the reason is, when we campaigned, we said no council member should be on anything other than the town council. I don't want to be.
So that means I should come off NERC?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to be on anything, if there's any voting, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay.
I think it should be a board member, like, you know, building and planning, or somebody like that.
I mean, this specific spot, there's two designations that the council has to make. One of them has to be, as per Dan Klein had said at our last meeting, one of them has to be a council member, the other one has to be a citizen member.
We're voting on that, but it has to be a private citizen, it has to be a public official, and then it has to be two or three employees to be trained to help with that. So we're only voting on one, but we should vote on three, and we probably should defer this and say, okay, let's wait till we get all three lined up.
And I have no problem with that.
And that's all I'm saying.
There does have, there does have to be a council member designated to this board.
Okay.
And then, well.
No, thank you. I'm just saying, is the definition of public official?
It has to be public official, so it could also be bad.
No, thank you.
Oh, gosh.
You said it, you said it.
It's to go to ethics.
Like, does a, does a board member constitute a public official?
I'd have to.
Or an elected, I didn't use the word elected.
It depends on their bylaws, but my guess, without reading them, is going to be that it's an elected public official. If you gave, I mean, I could look at the bylaws, but my understanding was always one council member, one private citizen.
All right, so let's look at that, so I will look for a motion to defer this for tonight. Anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call, please?
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandino.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Jerry Swat.
Yes, yeah, it is deferred, five to zero. Item G, consider a donation to the Trittown Safety Village in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. If I recall, this is the second half of the money that we typically donate each year, Mr. Blazak?
Correct, we normally, we normally make the payment in one lump sum, but we, we kind of held back a half of a year, and now we're running late, so.
So you're, you're okay with this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is the, is this Safety Village up and running?
Yes, they're starting to do tours again.
And what are, what are the other towns? There's another town, there's Shererville, and then there's Dyer.
Shererville and Dyer.
Dyer doesn't put in as much. Dyer, I think, puts in.
They put in fifteen grand.
Fifteen thousand.
Correct.
So I like to change this twelve thousand five hundred to twenty-five hundred.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
So that would, that would make us even with, with what Dyer's putting in.
Well, how much does Dyer?
We've already paid twelve thousand five hundred.
We paid twelve five.
No, but we're adding to it, Mike.
We have been paying twenty-five for years, and then a couple of years back, it was raised at twenty-seven five. Shererville kicks in twenty-seven five. Dyer has always said we're smaller, and we shouldn't have to donate that much, and I've pushed to try and get a reaction, to try and get them to donate more.
And how much is Dyer putting in?
Fifteen thousand total.
They're at fifteen thousand.
And we're at twenty-seven five, as is Shererville.
We'd be, we'd be the same as Dyer, Mike.
And Shererville puts in equal to us?
Yes.
I think we're better than Dyer.
I believe so.
Dyer shouldn't.
So, so would you like to make that a motion, Wayne, then, to change, modify this to be two thousand five hundred?
I'd like to make it twenty-five, make them make a motion to pay the twenty-five hundred to match what Shererville, Dyer's paying.
And Brian, what are your, and you think we need to do the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
All right, so Wayne's got a motion to change this to twenty, two thousand five hundred, which would then make our total of fifteen thousand. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call.
Mike Aurelio.
No.
Brian Blazak.
No.
Wayne Pandino.
Yes.
Mike Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swat.
No. So now we're back to the main motion. So is there a motion to authorize donation in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak, support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio, roll call, please?
Mike Aurelio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pandino.
No.
Mike Schilling.
Yes.
Jerry Swat.
Yes.
Can I make a short comment on that?
Yes, you may.
President, my understanding is, we agreed to pay this.
Absolutely.
So I think we'd be, just saying, why I voted a certain way, I think we should be men of our word, we want to renegotiate this.
I don't think we agreed.
I think we should renegotiate for the settlement, not after the fact.
Right.
Okay, item number nine, reports and correspondence, town council.
I have none.
Mr. Aurelio?
I have none.
Wayne?
Yeah, last meeting, you said that liaison should have a report. So my report for the water side is we have approximately nine thousand two hundred and sixty meters, we have approximately three thousand and sixty-two meters registers to convert to the new system, which would take probably another couple of years. The SCADA system, the update on that, is it's all up and, or not up and running, they got the water side just about set, they got all their parts, ninety percent of their parts are in. Jason was talking to them, they're working well with Verizon. We're going to wait for the laptop that is going to come with the system, because we'll get a better warranty on it, we won't lose on the warranty. And I don't know if Jason has something to say about what you just learned today?
There was a issue with the cradle points. Originally, the design was a completely isolated network. That would mean no remote control of the cradle points for maintenance, for more updates or configuration changes. So Verizon and Austrian Electric worked together, and they created a isolated network strictly for cradle points, so that there will be the ability to do the necessary maintenance, remote changes and things like that, and still be completely secure. So.
And the completion date for the SCADA system would probably be right around in May of next year. And now Shererville has cut us off from the water for getting water for sprinkling, which is good, we won't have to go until probably June of next year. Parishwood subdivision, they, the waterworks agreed to pay forty-three, forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars to upgrade their main from eight inches that they're going to put in, we're going to put in, or they're going to put in the twelve inch, but we're paying that difference. So that's forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Last month, meter changeouts was sixty-six, new construction was fifty-seven. They repaired some sanitary sewers for five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars with howling asphalt, superior pumping, lift station twelve, lift station two, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Superior pumping, lift station four, and they had to repair pump one, that was seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, and brown equipment for sewer vac repairs was five hundred and eleven dollars. There's fourteen lift stations that are all in operation, and they do the regular maintenance on that, so everything's good with that. Let's see.
I have a question before you go further.
Yes, sir.
The water main upgrade from eight to twelve inches, we're paying for the upgraded part?
Yes. Yes.
They're putting the main in?
They're required to put in the eight inch main.
Okay.
And then, we like a 12 inch main, so they wanted us to pay the difference. And then, the sanitary, the water board said yes.
Okay, so it's our preference.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's going to give us better capacity.
Okay.
So, and then, let's see.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, the, we had some, I asked why it was a problem with one of the dockets, and then I asked, well, we had a computer, a laptop, and I said, well, didn't Kathy take that home? Well, the laptop is not set up to work for somebody to take home, and I don't know if Jason can get that going. Is that possible? Because my question was, I thought they had that where they can take it home, but it's not been set up, so can you-
Wayne, we received that Friday.
Did you?
Yeah, we got it on Friday.
All right, well, I know there was a laptop that was delivered, so if you can get that set up, that would be great. And then, we had a meeting last night, and Jason so graciously let me use the printer, but I couldn't go back there, and he said, you can't go back there, and I said, why? Well, there's two councilmen back there, and they're having a meeting with the state people. I'm like, you know, I found that kind of, I'm a councilman, I should be able to go back there, I know it's on chance, all I want to do is pick up some papers. I don't think that was right. And then, I was glad to come in here today and find my name tag in the right spot and not moved over, because we keep playing musical chairs with that. I sit here, and this is where I want to sit. I don't want somebody playing games. And Mr. Arulio, you're smiling about it, but I don't think that's right. I think it's disrespectful, okay? So, I don't like it.
Wayne, every time-
Wayne, I don't know even what you're talking about.
Well, but then why are you-
Wayne, the name tags get moved around every time there's a meeting, different board, the name tags get moved around because different people are there.
Well, I, you know what, Jerry, you must have amnesia, because you stood right here, and you told me that I have to sit here. I can't sit there. And I told you, I gave you one reason why I sat here, didn't I?
Yeah.
And I said, I don't want to see that again, but it was twice.
I didn't-
I don't, I think it's disrespectful.
I don't put the name tags up, Wayne.
You were standing right there, and that was the same meeting that-
Today?
Not today, I said I'm thankful that it wasn't moved.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said.
Okay.
And I don't like that. That's not right. And then, you wanted, from the Parks Department, you wanted a report for that.
An update, sure.
Sure. So, the Gates Skate Park, the Parks received notification on Friday, September 17th, that the project is delayed this spring because of experiences with the project delays in the northern part of the country for a sponed ranch. The St. John will receive first priority in 2022. The electrical conduit will be installed this fall for future lighting, so that's going to take effect, but they decided not to start a big project, because with the cold and all that, we don't know when the cold's going to come in. The boardwalk for Founder's Park, that's nearly complete, they got the platform in, they're starting to do that, that's maybe eight foot done, but the sides, everything's all set up. The site concrete has to get done. Playground equipment was delivered, so that's going to get installed soon. The shelter installation will go up, asphalt paving and landscaping, and the completion date for that would be November 24th. Suncrest Church, the Parks explored the opportunity to purchase the facility and convert it into a community center. Facility details, it's constructed in 2022 with additions in '06 and '17. It's approximately 40,000 square feet, it sits on 15 to 16 acres, and it has approximately 336 parking spots. They want to have, the park board wants to have a meeting with the Town Council, and explored the possibility of buying Suncrest for our community center.
Okay.
And we looked at it, some of the park people looked at it, Johnny wasn't present, but there was an interest in that, and when we campaigned, we thought that a community center would be a great idea, and that was part of our campaign promises to the people, that the only place that we could do that would be Suncrest, and then there's a possibility if we get the 40 acres over there by Heartland Park. So that may or may not happen. The events that are coming up for Prairie West is the fishing derby, that's going to be Saturday, September 25th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Location Prairie West, ages 3 to 15, there's going to be prizes and giveaways. And then, in October, October 23rd, will be the Boo Bash, that's from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, trunk retreat, Halloween theme event, and there's going to be train rides, pumpkin decorating and more.
The trunk retreat again?
Trunk, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was kind of reading fast, because I knew you guys were in a hurry.
That was good.
So Boo Bash, and that's October 23rd, 2021, 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and the location is Prairie West Park. And it's a Halloween theme event with games, train rides, pumpkin decorating and more.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Wayne.
And then-
Sorry.
Yeah. We had, and this was a good example tonight. I got misled with voting, and I think that we should have a meeting before the meeting, so we are on the same page. If we got something we don't understand, we can bring that up. We've had meetings in August where we had deferrals, we had meetings in July where we had deferrals. I know we deferred to police cars at the minutes, the fast aid program. We're better than that. We need to have more communication, and look at what we did with the budget, that worked out rather well. I wouldn't have picked a budget to do a public meeting, but I mean-
I don't think it worked out very well.
I, I mean, it took a long time.
Because we had a public meeting, and you didn't agree with it tonight, so I really-
Well, I, wait a minute, I didn't know nothing about that meeting. You didn't tell me nothing. If I didn't have a meeting with Tyler, he told me, well, we got a meeting tomorrow. No, we don't. And I brought that up, I brought that up at the meeting, I said, I didn't know nothing about it. And that's wrong. You shouldn't do that.
Wayne, you asked me for the meeting.
I asked for the meeting, and then your words were, that was two weeks ago, but I never heard anything.
Oh, and I told you at the council meeting that we were going to be having that meeting in two weeks.
No, no. You didn't do that.
Then I communicated incorrectly, sorry.
Right. But that's just wrong, you shouldn't do that.
Okay.
And I would like to see two meetings, that would be great, but I think we're wanting only communities that don't have a second meeting.
Okay.
And then, oh, there's one other thing, September 23rd, which is coming up, Police Appreciation Day. I made that announcement last time, but I think that we should support that, our policemen-
Tomorrow, right, where does that start?
That is-
What time?
I don't know the start, I just, I got it on Facebook.
It starts at Lake Central.
It's Lake Central and goes over to-
Six thirty or seven, what time does it start?
Five fifteen starts the staging, they leave at six o'clock, and to go to the halls of St. George, the event at St. George starts at seven.
Right, thank you. And then I want to know about the impact fees, it was mentioned that the impact fees we're making money on already, and I don't, I kind of find that hard to believe.
That's the road impact fee.
Road impact fees.
Every brand new building permit issued since July 13th, which is-
And I think your words were that it's, we're making money on it already.
We're not making money, it's being put into a fund.
Well, I think your words were last meeting that we're already making money with it.
Yes, we are.
And how can you say that? I mean, I could be wrong, we paid $165,000 for that contract for them to get it all going.
So you're saying, wait, so your point is that there is upfront cost, so-
So therefore-
So it's going to take a while to make that up.
It's still in the red. Of course.
Well, I mean, but-
But when you start a brand new program, Wayne, do you expect to start immediately-
Hey, I didn't, I didn't say that, I, you know.
All right, the point is, the road impact fee has started in July.
But I don't think we're making money on it.
We have collected some money, and it's in the bank.
It's going to take some time to catch up to having it made up. And then, we get back to the minutes that we deferred to, I had asked to have them to be read, or put into the minutes, word for word, and it wasn't done that way.
Correct.
And my point was that, I suggest everybody to ask questions. It may or may not change anything, but in that case, with, it was that $57,000 for the Irish group to add more to that impact fee, and we saved by asking questions, $17,830. And that's what I said, I wanted that to change in the minutes, that's all I said. And then after tonight, oh, it's all set up, and that's what you guys adopted, I keep hearing it's three to one, or three to two. I get it, I'm going to say my piece, and all I want is the respect for it.
Only four to one, but that was three to two for sure.
Right.
I can explain my own vote, for sure.
That's right.
It seems to me-
I don't care, Mike.
It seems to me you have a vendetta with Brian.
I don't have a vendetta with Brian.
Minutes are not supposed to be word for word, they should be accurate, amen to that, they need to be accurate.
Well, it's not a-
Like, I don't want the minutes for this last part, word for word, I don't mind they have the meaning there, but I don't want it word for word, we'll be there all day reading that.
But in some cases, when somebody asks for it, that's all I'm saying, the respect that get it done the way that that person asked for it, that's all that I said, that's all that I wanted.
And we deferred them last month because they weren't corrected yet.
Right.
And I don't want to defer them any longer, because we haven't had a chance to do the minutes.
Right.
We don't have those minutes corrected, we don't have the July minutes done, we don't have the August minutes done.
I understand.
And I want to get these in the public record.
My only point in doing that was, ask questions, because it could help you down the road. The sanitary board asked questions, they saved $29,000. I mean, that's my point, I wasn't trying, might the pick on Brian, but you know, when you run that through-
It seems that way, from where I'm sitting, it seems that way.
Okay.
Everything started out good, until you didn't want to get the minutes done verbatim, that's the whole thing.
That's not what minutes are, they're not verbatim.
Okay.
But when you ask for it, that's how it should be.
Shouldn't ask for that.
Okay. Mike Schilling, you have anything for Town Council reports and correspondence?
Oh, yeah, I got something here, just from the last board of safety meeting, they had a promotion of Mike Gillett from deputy, from county chief to now deputy chief, they brought on a new fireman, they also reported that they're going to have their public safety open house, it's going to be, can you get the date here? It's going to be August, October the 9th, front end of three, at the public safety facility. And then that's all I have from there.
I have one piece that an actual citizen reached out and kind of brought to the attention that, we're, I think we have way too many landscaping companies around town, and maybe some other contractors around town that are untagged, as far as the trucks go. And when they're untagged, we're not necessarily sure that they even have license to work in town. I mean, our regulations require that, I mean, if they're doing landscaping or sprinkler work, they need to be registered with the town, and I don't think we're doing that. I think we need to have a discussion at some point in time as a council, how much we actually want to try to enforce this. I'd like to see it done, but at the expense of putting more people on to make sure that, you know, all of these violations are registered or not. So, you know, the point was brought forward that we maybe need to monitor this a little closer, and I'll be looking for some input from you guys on how we do this, hopefully before the next meeting, so we can kind of give some direction. That's all I have.
You know, I did have something on my committee to do.
Okay, go ahead.
So the Economic Development Committee, we did meet today, we continue to work on our waterfront district. The committee did meet with some potential restaurants that had interest in coming to our town, like a high-end Italian restaurant, they had interest in coming, we've also been in contact with the property owner, they are moving ahead, so I think this can be and is going to be an exciting project for our town, which will bring nice economic development, additional tax dollars, and just nice things for our residents. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Beth?
The only item I would share this evening is, we are proceeding with Christmas in the park, traditional Christmas in the park. Johnny, you might kill me, but the parade, so we, last year, if you recall, we did the parade in lieu of opening night due to COVID restrictions, and the parade was a huge hit. I mean, it was. But, the amount of work that it took to coordinate the parade, in conjunction with the amount of work it takes my office to coordinate opening night, not to mention the staff that we have to request on a holiday weekend, to go pretty much day and night, it's just too much. Now, I have a special something coming from Sheriff Martinez, so there will be something great that occurs at our traditional opening night, and what I would propose, because I am a huge proponent of a parade, maybe in connection with your fireworks, we could do a Fourth of July parade.
Love the idea.
Yeah, okay, so, it's not no to a parade, but it's just maybe not on opening night of-
Otherwise, could you do it maybe on night two, or night three, or?
So I went back and forth, well, I guess I'm, I went back and forth on it, and I just feel like a parade brings in Santa, like, you don't bring Santa and do the fireworks and turn around and do a parade. I feel like, like, the natural flow of it is a parade kicks it off, and then the fireworks, and Santa arrives, it's, I don't know, it's just, would make most sense for it to work on that timeframe.
Okay.
And trust me, like, I hate to say no, I do, you know, I, but-
I think you, right now, the sheriff's department's plan, if I, what I suspect, it's a good idea.
Yeah, that is nice.
That is a clever idea.
It is very nice.
Yep, so, but yeah, we're in the process right now of planning each night's events. Tree sponsor letters will go out in October, like everything else, there's a tree shortage, so we have to limit to 100 trees, we can't go over that this year. But everything's running smoothly, and I don't foresee any reason why it would be canceled this year.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, keep helping with the sheriff, so that we get what I think's up your sleeve.
Mr. Westlin, anything?
I don't have a report.
You don't?
No, I don't.
Chris?
I just want to thank the police department and the fire department, and all the departments that helped on our incident at Lake Central, the response was fabulous.
Outstanding.
Outstanding, there are definitely some learning experiences, if we watch the safety board meeting, that we're taking from that event, some areas that we need to work on as far as technology in large buildings, but the, I think it's, we're glad nothing happened as far as the event, and the police department showing that it's absolutely one of the best in the region. The fire department will be having, along with, in the realm of training and making our emergency services even better, the fire department's going to have a burn house October 17th, in the, I believe, 9,000 block of 93rd, around the curve, we're going to be shutting down that road, we are inviting other fire departments in the area to come in, train how to put a house on fire and how to put it out. It's going to take place, starting at eight o'clock, and it's probably going to go somewhere between four and five o'clock, depends when the house finally burns down. So it will be burned down in its entirety, once they're done training on it. The police and the Public Works Department will also assist the fire department in shutting down that road, since it's going to look like a fire department encampment for a while. With that, their annual letter went out with some technology involved, anyone that lives in town will be seeing that, so I would encourage everyone to take their surveys that they have, they have a QR scanner in order to facilitate the survey-taking easier. As mentioned, they have the open house coming up, Tyler and myself are going to be working, as well as the rest of the staff, at our department heads, we've brought it up several times, there will be a community cleanup day, October 30th, that we're working on with Suncrest Church. Update on 96th and Joliet, if anyone went out past the shops on 96th today, you'll see that we had road paving crews out there, so we're bringing this ship to harbor, it, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, we have, we plan on having it striped this We have, we plan on having it striped this week. We're going to have mowing crews out there to clean it up. Asphalt should totally be down by today. And we will have the traffic signal going up, hopefully knock on wood this weekend. And I believe NDOT intends to activate that traffic signal Monday, which will be great because my next point of interest is that the railroad crossings at Thielen and 93rd will be getting closed for work by the respective railroad. So we need Joliet open, so that way we have bypass there. I believe they intend on opening or closing those crossings September 28th. On 101st, the county will be planning on starting paving on October 17th. So this town is continually getting roads closed and opened. But it'll be nice when it's done. That's a county project, but I just want to make people aware because it does affect our community. Public Works will be doing crack sealing throughout the community and cold patching when possible, weather permitting. Between, I think they started a week or two ago. Anybody that kind of drove past and delivered their water bill can see where we did practice on the town hall. And they'll be out for the next six weeks respectively doing that. They're also going to be doing sidewalk grinding throughout some areas of the town as well, until they hit about $40,000 of sidewalk grinding. So we think we have about $50,000 budgeted annually for sidewalk work. So that will be starting shortly if it hasn't already. That's my update.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
Thank you.
And yes, the Kmart is still empty. That's, that always comes up.
All right, item number 10, request to purchase. Beth? RTPs?
Yes, so you were presented with RTPs totaling $273,442.17. There are two from Compass Minerals, which is, Cargill usually does our street salt. This year, the, we're making a switch to Compass Minerals. And so that'll be the largest chunk of the RTPs right there. L Warren, Precision Concrete, and then there are four from, from Federal Signal.
Do you have a motion to approve the RTPs as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that? Thank you, Wayne. All, a roll call, please.
Mike Arulio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondino.
Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
And Gerald Swatz.
Yes. And item number 11 is payment of the bills. You have before you the docket for $3,640,000, $640,136.17. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion to pay?
I make a motion to pay $3,640,136.17.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne. Roll call?
Mike Arulio.
Yes.
Brian Blazak.
Yes.
Wayne Pondino. Yes.
Michael Schilling.
Yes.
Gerald Swatz.
Yes. That is approved, five to zero.